Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular council meeting in the Park City City Council on June 12th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausada.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Ms. President, Your Honor.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Amal Berquist is going to leave us in the invocation and Councilman Tom Jones is going to leave us in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Ms. Powell. Dear Lord, thank you for the blessing of having this city to call home. Thank you for this governing body who strives to lead in strong ways and in responsible ways. Lord, we ask your wisdom on their deliberations tonight. We ask your blessing and your protection on our delegation in Singapore with the Korean and US talks going on. Lord, we just ask that you give a measure of wisdom and grace as those talks continue. Thank you for this meeting tonight. We just ask for good decisions to be made and we ask for safety for our city in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seen. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I would ask the council to add an item F for an executive session to our agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Is there a second? All right. People lit up and then everybody disappeared. John?
Second.
Yes. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes eight zero. We don't have anything this evening for awards and presentations. We'll move on to public forum and we have two people signed up this evening. Carol Flowers.
Good evening, lady and gentlemen. I hope this finds you well this evening. What I'm here for this evening is to invite you to a reception. As we all know, our oldest business in Park City is leaving us. True Value has been at their current building since 1964 and I frankly don't know where they were at before that because I didn't move here until '68. But they will be greatly missed and they have been of good service to the citizens and governmental bodies throughout the years in very, very many ways. To that end, Pride decided that we wanted to give them a grand send-off. So next Friday, the 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00, we will be serving refreshments down there. Family members will be there. Bob thinks his dad will be able to attend. And we were inviting as much of the public as possible to stop by if they had the opportunity and especially for any of you on the governing body that would care to attend. So Pride will be there and everybody is certainly welcome. And I am so sad, I can't tell you. Now we're going to have to drive all the way into Home Depot to get some bolts. It's just like, oh. But that's all I have to say and I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Tom?
I just have one comment. Carol said she didn't know where they were at before they moved into her building. They were about where the Mexican food restaurant is in the shopping center. They were located in that area.
All right. Next, we have Terry Ford. Terry?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Terry Ford, 2618 Evanston, Park City. And I just had an idea run into me today that the library scheduled a fire truck to come out and set up and spray all the kids down. And there were 75 to 100 kids there and it just reminded me that I think it's time the city does something about a pool or at least a splash pad. If you get that many kids on them, it really wasn't informed about it very good. With all the things we've done lately, it's time to do something for the public. And, you know, we spend a lot of money on a lot of things and that's about all I can say. It's time to do something.
All right. Thank you. That's all we have for public forums. We'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Woodson. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with some public works items. The park department worked on the berms and thanks to Pride and their efforts to help in that endeavor, it's starting to shape up. And they will be working quite diligently this week to make sure the pine looks presentable in that area over there.
Jack, before you go any further, just want to add that New Anthem Church also came and dealt with the berms. Through Pride, they organized that. New Anthem came out and spent an afternoon out there.
We really appreciate it and they did really make a big difference. Park Department sprayed for weed control at Sherwood Building and they came out here and overseeded some of our grass and bear spots here at City Hall. Street Department put up flags for Memorial Day. They took them down and then they put them back up for Flag Day. We're trying to beat the rain. That's the reason why they went ahead and put them up today. The work on hillside repairs, a mile of repairs on that started May the 30th. They have one side done. They still have to do another side yet. The street department and others in public works helped to clear out the old city hall and believe that's going to close.
We close tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So. Water and sewer department, the average work order per day for May was 27. Going to show you a problem that has generated itself. You might want to look up here on the screen. That's 85th Street and the road has buckled all the way across 85th Street. Now, Allen has got a board level, so you can see that bump is up a good six to eight inches. We've put signs out there to warn the public of the bump. We're going to have to go out and get bids to get that fixed. That's going to be quite extensive. So also, here's an inlet that the heaving destroyed that we'll have to replace and reconstruct. So we'll be getting that back to you hopefully at your next meeting so we can move forward with that. Also, on Broadway.
George, can you? We have a question. George?
Yeah, George. On the wheels there on 85th Street. Didn't we do a big change order here a few years ago when we had done that to take care of that problem? Well, there was a series of cracks underneath the asphalt when we milled it off and they had to come in and replace the concrete. I don't know that it had any effect on this at all. The heat tends to make this concrete expand and it'll just erupt sometimes and that's what's happened here. They have been watching this particular spot now for two or three years. The darker asphalt is where it was a gap and they would put the asphalt in there to cover the gap, but instead of pulling apart, now it jammed together and exploded. You'll see this along the interstate. Anywhere where there's concrete, you can have this particular problem. I don't know that anything they did four or five years ago, you know, caused this, George. I just couldn't tell you. I just remember the big change order. Yeah, there was a big change order, all right. So, but I don't think that that was the cause of that. I think this is mother nature on this. On Broadway, it was brought to my attention and of course I've known for quite a while, the 85th intersection with Broadway is highly dangerous. One of our council members brought to my attention that that person felt like we need to really do a little bit more than what we've done. We put stop signs with blinking red lights on the cross streets. Still have had some accidents up there. And so I have ordered and we have them in place. We have the signs, we just haven't got to put up yet. 48-inch signs that says caution, dangerous intersection ahead with yellow blinking lights on these signs. And they'll be put up at the... The problem is there's two hills on either side going down to a valley and vehicles coming over that valley, if they're going fast enough, could catch traffic trying to cross Broadway and cause accidents. So other than building a turnaround, which the state suggested, I went a little cheaper and did these signs and hopefully it will warn traffic about that. The ASTM standard, there should be adequate sight distance for vehicles coming over those hills to see the intersection and to stop. But for whatever reason, they're either speeding or not paying attention or whatever and accidents continue to happen. So we're going to try this and hopefully this will help cut down the accidents there. We'll just have to monitor it. And if this works at this location, we might duplicate it at 77th.
George, are you trying to buzz in again?
Yeah. Do we share that intersection with Valley Center? No, it's ours. The whole thing? Right. We've got both sides of that four-lane highway? Correct. Okay. Business development. Right now, things are just really hopping. We've got four projects in process. These are good-sized projects. I'm working on three others. I can't divulge names or whatever. Two of them are manufacturer-type businesses. One of them is a hotel. So that'll be coming to you hopefully in not too distant future. So. Let me see here. Okay. Branding analysis and flag design. For your information, that is in process. They have already met with the council and everything. They're going to be Monday, June 18th, going to be at the senior center to get input from some of our seniors. Wednesday, June 20th, they're going to be at the library at 7:00 PM, hopefully to catch some of the library goers, getting their input. They're going to be back at the senior center again, June 26th, at 10:30 AM. Wednesday, June 27th, they're going to attend the Chamber Luncheon at the Best Western at 11:30. Anybody wanting to attend that, it's $8 for lunch. They want to get input from the businesses of Park City. Then Wednesday, June 27th, back at the library at 7 o'clock PM. These are discovery meetings to try to fill people out and make that public engagement going.
And we'll promote all these through social media so we can get those dates and make sure we really push it hard the day of the event to make sure we get the maximum people there.
Okay. Sidewalk, I'm not going to read that. It's a date's about this long. We will, again, like the mayor said, we'll advertise those. I will tell you, if you go to www activelyparkcity.com, there is a survey, a sidewalk survey out on that site. Appreciate everybody going out there and taking the survey. This will help provide them input into their process for the sidewalks. Again, that's activelyparkcity.com. All the letters are together, there's no gaps.
Jack, we got another question?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, real quick, and I apologize if I missed this. The Monday, the June 18th meeting for the flag branding, what was the time for that one at the senior center?
The 18th, it was 1:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay, Jack, go ahead.
Anybody got any questions? Further questions?
Not seeing any. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from our senior center director, Madison Schreiner. Madison?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just a monthly update on the senior center. We've had almost 600 active members since the beginning of the year, which is a little bit more than last year at this time, so that's pretty good. And we are on track to complete our programming requirements for the year that the county sets for us. Last month, we had a lot of fun on our big Kansas road trip and we had a Mother's Day celebration afternoon tea and a presentation that was really awesome. Had a great turnout for that. Coming up this month, I'd like to promote this Thursday, June 14th, from 5:00 to 7:30, we're having a Father's Day celebration, bluegrass and barbecue. So we have a smoking diner food truck coming out and the Daylight Donuts is bringing their shaved ice machine. Those will be for purchase for anybody who attends. And we're also having musical entertainment from the band Reach For The Skies, a professional bluegrass and blues band. Also have some yard games available for people to play and hopefully it'll be a fun night. Anybody is welcome to attend to celebrate Father's Day. You don't have to be a father, so invite all the family. We've also started a dining with diabetes class this month that runs throughout the month and that is in partnership with the Setra County Extension Office in Wichita. And we have an outing to Mosley Street Melodrama on the 28th, which we're all very excited for. And looking forward into July, we have planned a creative writing workshop in partnership with WSU. One of their grad students is coming out teaching a five-week creative writing course for our seniors. It is a free class and it is limited to about 12 to 15 participants. So if anybody is interested or if you know of anybody who would like to attend that workshop, please let me know. And last but not least, I'm here to promote Chisholm Trail Seniors, their annual 4th of July bingo and raffle fundraiser, which happens every year on July 4th, 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Raffle tickets are 50 cents each. Bingo cards are $2 each or you can get six for $10. You can buy raffle tickets at the senior center ahead of time if you'd like or the day of and you do not have to be present to win your prize. There's, you write your phone number in there and we'll give you a call if you win. So yeah, we welcome everybody out for that as well. I'd be happy to address any questions or concerns.
Does anybody have any questions for Madison? George?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Madison, for the activities that you're providing for our citizens. I think it's needed here. There are a lot of elderly citizens here in Park City, so I appreciate all your hard work.
Well, and I appreciate the council's support. Ever since I started working there, I've felt all the support from you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you very much, Madison.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And Ben?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to new business, item A, and this is a public hearing regarding the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for the Park Industrial LLC. And I will open this public hearing at 7:19. And Sarah, did you want to speak on anything here?
No, me too. I usually do.
Let's go ahead because I don't see anybody running up here to go and talk.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell. We're bond counsel to the city and we're here this evening to hold the required public hearing regarding the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for a new project that is being constructed by Park Industrial. We do have Steve Bartlett here with the company and Dale Ward, his counsel, if you do have any questions of them on the particular project. The project will be in an amount not to exceed $13,200,000. And as with all of your industrial revenue bonds, you will recall that this is not in any way a liability of the city. It's purely an accommodation to the company to give them two benefits. One is a sales tax exemption, which we covered by the resolution at your last meeting. The other is it's eligible for a property tax exemption. In this case, the property tax exemption would be everything except a payment and lieu of taxes of $3,700 plus, as you may or may not recall, the capital outlay levy portion of the school district can no longer be exempted. But other than that, it would be 100% exemption with the payment and lieu of taxes for a period of 10 years. The public hearing is required by statute and then once you close the public hearing, you'll be asked to consider an amending resolution just specifically dealing with the property tax exemption. Do you have to answer any questions?
Tom?
I have one. We don't have a public hearing listed on here. We have considered for a resolution. Are we going to have a public hearing?
We have a public hearing. We amended the agenda on Monday.
You do have amended it.
And sent the new one out.
Okay. I've got a hard copy here, so if you need to correct it, okay.
Okay.
I'll stand corrected.
All right. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak? Not seeing anyone. We will close this public hearing at 7:21 PM. And we will move to item B, which is consider a resolution of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, amending the resolution number 991-2018 of the city determining the visibility and issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, renovation, and equipping of a manufacturing facility to be located in said city and authorizing the execution of related documents. Tom?
I'd like to apologize for my opening the old minute tab up instead. And then when I go ahead, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we consider a resolution governing body for approving this.
Okay. John?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second in favor of item B. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausada.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight zero?
That is resolution 992-2018.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming too, gentlemen. That brings us to item C, which is consider a change order for the High Ridge 3 for Water and Sewer to be funded from, to be funded by the 2018-1 temporary notes issued on March 1, 2018. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up there on your screen there, if you follow me, I'll explain what the problem is. The green line is a new sewer line going from left to right, extending along hydraulic on the east side of hydraulic. It crosses the entrance to that portion of High Ridge that gains access from hydraulic. The blue line there you see is an existing water line. They had estimated during their design and everything, the depth of the water line and felt that there was enough possible clearance between the two. Well, when they actually got out there and started digging, they found out that it wasn't adequate to meet state statute. So they're going to have to extend a casing on the sewer line, the new one, and then they're going to have to raise the water line to provide the clearance that the state statute requires. That change order is $19,690. It also, if you'll see the yellow line there, the homeowners association had put in a sprinkler system there. It's about a $5,000 system that's going to be destroyed by putting the sanitary sewer in there. And so that takes and replaces that line and that system for the HOA.
John?
So was the sprinkler system not going to be destroyed prior to this change order?
Excuse me?
The sprinkler line especially. I'll speak on, I mean, from the lower cost item.
Yeah.
It's a $5,000 repair.
Yeah, roughly.
Would that not have been, I mean, weren't they going to be digging there anyway?
Well, I don't think that anybody knew it was there until they started digging the sewer line. That's something the HOA has done. And so they started digging and they ran in and then into the HOA line.
I mean, in the end, it's the city's easement, so you wouldn't have to go back and cover it. But if you remember what we did on 53rd Street, we went back and we made those repairs to their irrigation system that we destroyed.
Tom?
This is all being assessed back to that development, correct?
Correct.
So it's not city, it will go into their bond when they finance it?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. That will be part of, part of it is being assessed, part of this, this change order is being assessed to water and part of it's to sewer. And when the construction job is completed, it'll be converted into bonds and special assessments will be applied for those 30 units at the corner.
Melvin?
I'll make a motion to approve that change order there for the High Ridge.
And you got that total?
What is it?
$19,690, including the sprinkler system.
Okay. That's your motion?
That's my motion. Yes.
Does anybody want to second that? Jim?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Opposed.
Aye and two.
Okay. So that passes five three. That brings us to item D, which is consider decorative weed barrier rock for this, for the city administration building to be paid out of the 2018 budget, general administration budget. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the east side of this building is the employee parking lot. There's a little piece of concrete about this big next to the building and then a stretch of grass about this big falling off to the curb. We looked at several areas and like on the south side really needs to be done, but it's like almost 13 some odd thousand dollars to do that, which we can't find the funds to do that. However, on the east side of the building, it's $1,569. The guys have to hand mow that. Also, they come in and everybody has to stop what they're doing, go out there and move their vehicles so they can address that issue and mow it. We feel that the price of $1,569 might be well worth the expenditure for taking care of that section. We do think the other section needs to be done. It's just a matter of finding the capital money to do it. And so... And so, that's kind of what the situation is.
We'll see the fifteen sixty-nine trade back off and the labor that we're currently spending trying to maintain it. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the lowest bid for the east parking lot, only totaling one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the decorative weed barrier rock for city administration building to be paid out of two thousand and eighteen budget, general administration budget.
Okay, John? Melvin?
I had a question, did you price how much it'd be to cement versus rocket?
Oh, I'd pay a lot more for cement, yeah, this is just gravel, dig it out, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes eight to zero. That brings us to item E, which is consider the appointment of Gary Aldrich to the Stormwater Advisory Board. Gary's here this evening, I think everybody's familiar with him, but after we put back in place the Stormwater Advisory Board, Gary would like to be a part of that, so he has applied to get us started. John?
I will make a motion that we approve Gary Aldrich to be appointed to the Stormwater Advisory Board.
And Jim?
I second that and thank him for his willingness.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight to zero. Thank you, Gary. That brings us to item F, I'd ask for an executive session of ten minutes for personnel matters, not including elected officials, and that the governing body and the city attorney be present. Ben?
I make a motion there that we move into executive session for ten minutes with the council and city mayor, attorney.
George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes eight to zero. All right, George? We're reconvening at seven forty-two from executive session where no binding action was taken. And we'll move on to governing body reports and we'll start with Jim.
I have nothing to add tonight.
Yeah, Brandy?
The Fourth of July Committee's getting in full swing, we're now starting to meet weekly. So, if you'd like to attend one of those meetings, our next meeting's going to be Tuesday night at the Best Western at six o'clock. We're still looking for any young ladies who are interested in signing up for the first annual Salute Freedom Miss Park City Pageant. Where we're looking for some more vendors to sign up to bring their food trucks to the event. And the Fourth of July Committee is also looking for some volunteers to assist in directing the parade route. So, if you're interested, please, you contact me or go out to the Park City KS Fourth of July page and put a request out there and someone will get in contact with you.
Thank you, Brandy. George?
I don't have anything.
I got two things, Jack called me last week and was talking to me about some issues down in our area. And we had a major boom while I was on the phone with him and he investigated that and I've never heard back whether they've resolved anything on that or not. But it's something that's been happening during business hours, many were from six in the morning to four in the afternoon occasionally. And it sounds like somebody blowing a semi tire out in the street, I mean, it shakes and rattles the windows and everything, so. Anyway, he also talked to me yesterday, asked me a question, and I found out last night that they're looking at in the future highway projects, we'll have to bond them up front. So, in the past, you've done your project and you bonded it and paid for it and the state paid you as you did it. It looks like that in the future, we may be carrying all the cost up front and get paid in arrears when it's done. So, that could be an issue down the road, I asked about interest expense on that yesterday and was told it would be paid. But it's all just error right now, there's no positive issues with that. That could affect us on the bridge and on West Broadway. I just want council to be aware of that, there's nothing definite yet, but it is being discussed.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Melvin?
I have nothing.
Ben?
Sure, I just wanted to say thank you to former council member Gary Aldrich for serving on the Stormwater Committee there. Looking forward to what we can do to improve Park City through that. And I want to give a big thank you to our city staff, to those that were out here setting up the flags for Memorial Day and then back out here again to our Public Works employees. Thank you, and then of course our administrative staff keeping us up to date on everything. Just want to say thank you for that and then also thank you for their comments earlier concerning the pool or something for our citizens there. I think it's important that we look to address that here soon.
George, got anything about coming up this weekend?
Yeah.
What do you got?
I don't know if I could top Ben, but anyway, our tenth annual Park City Fishing Derby is this weekend, Saturday, June sixteenth, from nine to eleven. This is our tenth anniversary, back when we first started, I actually had brown hair, so you can see what ten years will do to you. But anyway, it's a free event, everybody come out and enjoy it, it's a community event. We have, I think last year we had a hundred and fifty kids. So, if you're looking for something to do this Saturday, come on out to it, it's nine to eleven, it's at Chisenpoint Pond on North Grove, if you don't know where it's located. It's on Facebook, it's on the Park City channel, as well as the video board as you come in and out of Park City. So, we look forward to everybody being there. We also have a free hot dog feed at the end, so look forward to that, thank you.
John?
I have nothing.
Okay. Ben?
I make a motion, adjourned.
And George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes eight to zero.